So, welcome and thank you for joining us today for the Young Voters Engage the Candidates City Council Forum. My name is Prescott Smith here on behalf of Fuel Scottsdale, and I will serve as the moderator of the forum. It's a privilege to welcome eight of the nine candidates in the Scottsdale City Council race. Mike Auerbach, Tammy Caputi, Bill Crawford, Tom Durham, Betty Janik, Becca Linig, John Little, and Kevin Maxwell. It should be noted Guy Phillips declined the invitation to participate on June 19th. Before we begin, I'd like to thank our sponsor hosts for today's event. Scottsdale Rising Young Professionals, which is part of the Scottsdale Area Chamber of Commerce, Fuel Scottsdale, part of the Scottsdale Coalition of Today and Tomorrow, Scottsdale Leadership, and Scottsdale Community College. The participating groups have come up with a number of topics and questions for today's discussion, and a member of each of those groups will serve on our panel today to ask them. I will be the moderator to keep the discussion on track. Our panelists are Olivia Brincati of Scottsdale Leadership, Dominic St. Angelo of Scottsdale Rising Young Professionals, Sarah Drennan of Scottsdale Community College. The goal today is to generate discussion on each of the issues we've identified. A panel member will direct a question to a specific candidate who will have a chance to answer it, and then I will facilitate a conversation and call another candidate who indicate they too would like a chance to answer. If candidates wish to comment, you can simply raise your hand or somehow indicate so I can see you, and I will call on you one by one. We will be time sensitive, and I may move us along from time to time to make sure we can address a variety of topics. We would hope no answer needs more than about a minute reply, but we will open today with a question for each of the candidates to answer. That question is, what are five words that describe you, your campaign, or your ideas for our city? We will start with Mr. Auerbach.
Thank you, Prescott. I'm very honored to be here and be able to participate. The five words that reflect me and my campaign is that I love Scottsdale. I could live anywhere.
Ms. Caputi.
Five words for me. Ethical, open-minded, forward-thinking, qualified, and adaptable.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Crawford?
I would say tenacity, integrity, I'm a worker, I'm honest, and qualified.
Thank you so much. Mr. Durham?
I'd say honest, advocate. Many people would say I'm smart, and straight shooter.
Thank you so much. Ms. Janik?
I'm going to veer off a little bit, and I'm just going to say representative citizens of Scottsdale.
Wonderful, thank you. Ms. Linig?
I can be known as compassionate, involved, ethical, open-minded, and positive.
Thank you. Mr. Little?
Principled, tested, committed, inquisitive, and positive.
Thank you so much. And Mr. Maxwell, your five words?
Let's see here. Let's go and say communicator, I'm transparent, I'm an innovator, I'm a thinker, and I'm a technologist.
Thank you so much. So now we'll go to our first panelist, Olivia, who has their first question.
All right, so my first question is for Tammy Caputi. There is a limited supply of attainable housing options for young professionals and their families in the city. Should Scottsdale offer developers incentives to build affordable housing, and if so, what kinds?
I think that workforce housing is a question of political will. The citizens of Scottsdale need to be able to say yes in my backyard in order to make it happen. I don't know if it's about giving money to developers. I don't know that there's enough money to give to make it worthwhile. It's more about, again, just having, making sure that the citizens say, yes, we want it. There are great examples of this all over our country. It's about the fact that we don't have enough supply. Land costs a lot, and neighborhood opposition is fierce. So, we really need to have zoning that allows for it. That's the bottom line. We can't be exclusionary. If we want to create more affordable housing, then we need to allow for it. You've got to be able to have four complexes in places where it makes sense, and we have to make sure that we do this in a way that fits in our community. Mixed-use housing options for people of all income groups leads to a more diverse, inclusive, economically robust community, and I would like to be a part of that. I know on the DRB, I sat through a couple of examples like Cabana on Hayden, which actually worked quite nicely. So, again, if the community decides that they want it, and we adjust the zoning for it, we can make it happen.
Thank you so much. I believe, Mr. Little, I saw you wave your hand.
Yes, thank you very much for recognizing me. Yeah, I think, I like Tammy's answer, but one of the things I'd add to it is, let's not forget that our general plan, we already promised people that we would have affordable housing. We didn't say if we'd had to subsidize it or not. We've already said we would. It's right in there. It says that we'll provide lifecycle housing. The citizen-approved general plan. The only question is, is when we do it? We've already said we were going to do it, so let's just get it done.
Thank you so much. Ms. Janik?
Yes, I believe that when we come up with our new general plan, these are issues that need to be addressed. I agree with what everybody else has said, and I think that if we can set up the five zones that I have mentioned before, which would be the southern part of Scottsdale, downtown, central, north, and north too, and have those groups come together and look at the general plan, and have a map of where we want all this development to happen. I think that if we all came together, we'd be way more likely to get a solution that the community would accept and actually celebrate. And I definitely think we need workplace housing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maxwell, and then Mr. Durham.
Yeah, thank you so much, Prescott. You know, this is a classic supply and demand issue. It's been, it's been estimated there's about 100,000 homes, affordable homes that are needed in the valley. And it's important that our workforce who works in Scottsdale live here, should they choose to do so. It's, I'm very disappointed whenever I have to hear police, especially our first responders. When I hear our police and fire department have to go to other municipalities to live, and then come to Scottsdale to protect our citizens, that's super disappointing. I wish they could live here. I'm in favor of a low, or exploring the idea of a low-income housing tax credit, which has been done at the state level, and it's a mirror of a federal program, which offers tax trust to developers who can keep rents low for 30 years. And Tempe just opened up, had a good idea, and they opened up something called the micro estate. So, again, it has been done in the valley, and I think that, like Tammy said, with the political will, we can do it here in Scottsdale.
Thank you so much. Mr. Durham?
Well, I think this is one of our most difficult problems that we're facing today, because everyone in Scottsdale wants high-salary jobs. We want high-tech jobs, we want high-salary jobs. That leads to demands for expensive housing, and we all want high property values. So, I agree with Betty that this is something that needs to be set into the general plan. We can have an agreement, and we can carry it out. As Kevin was mentioning, low-income housing is, as a tax lawyer in Chicago, I worked on quite a few low-income housing situations. They do offer tax credits, so that's one possibility that we could look at.
Thank you so much. Any other comments on this topic? Mr. Crawford?
Crawford, yeah. You know, there's ways to do this without costing the city money. We've got a lot of projects that are slated for development. We've got a lot of housing units that haven't been built yet, and we can incentivize developers to populate within some of those projects affordable housing. There's ways to do that. There's ways to do that with, when the projects are being considered for approval, there's ways to do that with tax incentives for providing affordable housing. There's models around the country that have done that, like, for example, Aspen, Colorado, that they had to come up with ways to provide affordable housing for their workforce, and they, and they are very creative. We can do the same thing without costing the city money.
Thank you. Ms. Linig?
So, as a Realtor, affordable housing is not just a Scottsdale issue, it's a nationwide issue. And I do know that we have a pretty amazing group of individuals that are starting affordable housing in other areas of our city, and I think it's important to collaborate with them and find out just exactly what it is that they're allowing or being able to do to get that taken care of. And it starts with the citizens being able to approve that, and the general plan is something that needs an update, but considering the fact that the general plan is so outdated, we need to revisit that and also redefine what housing, what affordable housing means.
Thank you so much. Mr. Auerbach, would you like the last word?
Absolutely. Thank you, Prescott. You know, there's a challenge in Scottsdale with land. As most everyone knows, we're landlocked, we're 32-plus miles north-south, but very thin east-to-west, and the only developable land that's left is the area that's just north of the 101, where the nationwide complex and campus is going up. That's the last of the land that the city purchased from the state land trust. The rest is infill. So, when discussing multi-level housing, apartment, condo-type living, affordable housing, there's a couple of different challenges there, and I think that the city's been tagged, perhaps correctly or not, with being a commuter city. The restaurant, the hotels, the travel industry, people don't earn the wages to be able to afford to live here in Scottsdale, and that issue does need to be addressed.
Great, thank you. Let's move to Dominic with our next question.
Sure. My first question is for Mr. Crawford. Change is an inevitable thing. 2020 has taught us that change can come out of the blue. Some of it is intentional, and Scottsdale's been changing for years. So, my question is, how can the city continue to grow, evolve, change, and enhance its economic base, yet maintaining its unique character that we've historically enjoyed?
The main thing that we have to do is we have to look to the future and see what our future needs are. What are our future housing needs? What are our future business needs? What are our future employment needs? How are we going to take care of and prepare a future for this young generation that is going through woke experience right now? And I'm, and I'm so glad that we're engaging the young people in this, because the decisions that they make in this next council election, that's your future. So, we have general plans that are outdated, that's true. We have character development plans that are, that are workable. There's been some things that have happened here recently where we have really harmed our future economically, vitality, housing opportunities, quality of life, because some of these projects have been turned into a political football for the purpose of building a political base to stop Scottsdale from moving forward. And if you want to know me for something, know me for the guy that is going to move Scottsdale forward for our future with quality, compatible growth, quality, compatible business opportunities, quality, compatible housing opportunities, transportation opportunities, and I'm going to do everything that I can to make our downtown great. There's no city that can be great without great downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Linig, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, I think change is something that you can't predict, right? I think that it's, it's difficult to be able to say that we saw this coming, obviously. And so, it's important to keep people on council that represent our city that are open-minded and that are able to pivot when change occurs, and to make decisions quickly, and, and make sure that they're representing the citizens properly.
Thank you so much. Ms. Janik?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out an interesting fact that I, I actually looked into this topic after we had our last discussion, and it turns out that according to the Kaiser Family Foundation, the United States has 45% of its population younger than 35 years of age, and guess where Arizona is? We're right next to the USA with 35% of our population under 35, I'm sorry, 45% of the population under the age of 35. So, I think that we need to look at what other communities have done to make sure that we keep our economy vibrant, that it's willing to change, that it's able to change, but I also think we need to respect what we've done in the past, and it's worked very well, and we got through the crash of the housing industry, and I think we survived there pretty well. So, I think we have a robust community that's going to be able to move forward and support what we want for our young people. They are the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Caputi and then Mr. Maxwell, please.
Yeah. So, as most people know, I grew up in Boston. In Boston, when you're in the city, you know you're in Boston. It's not a contradiction to feel like the city can grow and also maintain its authentic flavor. I certainly know I'm there when I get off the plane at Logan. We have to grow where it's appropriate. Our city's almost all built out. A fourth of it is preserved, which is fantastic. We have a few areas left that need to be economic engines for the city that will allow us to keep our beautiful open spaces and to keep our amenities high, which everyone loves, and our property taxes low. These things are important. We can grow and change and stay authentically Western in Scottsdale. Those are, those are not contradictory terms. We have to maintain our economic vibrancy in our downtown area, in our airpark, along the 101 Bell Road area, our Cure Carter. This is how we move forward with vibrancy for the future and stay Scottsdale. I've never understood why the two things cannot coalesce.
Thank you. Mr. Maxwell?
I totally agree with what Tammy just said. The question's about change management and growth, and I think we need to demand it, right? I mean, and as everybody said, they're not mutually exclusive things. We can't have both, and so I think it's important, it'll take a lot of collaboration and a lot of innovation to be able to do that. Also, the last thing I want to mention is that everybody seems to think that when we talk about the, the character of Scottsdale, it's all around architecture. It's not necessary. It's also about our culture. Events like the Prado del Sol, and the rodeo, and the charos, these are, you know, culturally significant things that we do, that all, that encompass our Western heritage. So, as long as we have those things, we're still going to be in good shape as well. So, that's why I mentioned that.
Thank you so much. Mr. Auerbach?
Yeah. Scottsdale needs a leader with the discernment to know how and where to grow and where not to, an advocate who's committed to protecting our open spaces and our signature events, and a voice for the principles that will grow a thriving economy. And we should all protect the city that we love and chose and keep it thriving and growing economically for the future. I believe that we can preserve our unique character and grow for the future.
Thank you so much. We have Mr. Durham and then Mr. Little.
But we are going to grow, there's no doubt about that. I'm in favor of growth in the biological sciences along the Cure Corridor, high-tech growth, but I think the key to growth is the people that live here get to decide what type of city they want to live in, and not have large 15-story buildings forced upon them. We are the number-one city for jobs in the United States right now, and we're doing that without 15-story buildings. The marquee is on hold. Because of COVID, those types of 15-story office buildings are not going to be as popular as they are in the past. We're a great place to work because we're a great place to live. People want to live here, and they want to work here. And as more people are working from home, I think we've got to move away from the concept of huge urban cores with large office buildings. We're just not going to be working that way anymore.
Thank you so much. Mr. Little?
Yes, I think that there's one really important lesson that we've learned that we're all painfully aware of right now, is that without our help, we have nothing. We have a double-headed dragon right now we're dealing with, with the pandemic and the economy, and guess what? Those two things are inextricably related to one another. My proposal to have Scottsdale repositioned as the healthiest city in America, as a place where when people start to travel again, they look to Scottsdale and they say, who's doing a good job making sure that people are safe? That we have the lowest incidence of heart disease, that we have the lowest incidence of obesity, that we pay attention to cleanliness and sanitation, and that we're doing things that create a healthy people and a healthy environment, because without that, it doesn't matter what else we do. And so, we're going to have to really focus, our economy's going to follow our ability to manage this pandemic, and so that's, I think, critical for our future, and it helps us diversify our economy beyond tourism to really amplify what we've already started in the Cure Corridor.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Now we'll go to our third panelist, Sarah, for a different topic.
Hi, thank you. Mr. Durham, younger people are the hope for our future, and the future belongs to our youth. So, why should a young person vote for you?
I think one of the greatest assets of our community, and one I know is used by a lot of people, is the McDowellson Oran Preserve, and it was threatened by commercial development, and it would have been unrecognizable, the area around the gateway would have been unrecognizable if that had gone through. And Betty Janik and I came together, and we spearheaded Proposition 420, which was able to protect that beautiful asset. So, I have a record of standing up for issues like that, which makes Scottsdale a better place. One other thing I'm passionate about is, is biking, and I would love to raise the profile of Scottsdale as one of the number-one biking cities in the country. We're pretty good at it right now. We could be better, because we've got fabulous mountain preserves, and we could hook those together with a better bikeway system in Scottsdale.
Thank you so much. Mr. Maxwell?
Yeah, thank you so much, Prescott. So, why should a young person look for me to be the city councilperson? Well, I'm one of the youngest candidates in the field. I can no longer say after Saturday that I am the youngest. We've got a conversation about that this weekend, but I am one of the youngest candidates in the field, which means I should be relatable. And I think if you know me, you'll know my social circle, you know that I regularly, you know, engage with a lot of people younger, a lot younger than I am, and so hopefully I'm relatable in that way. But I'm also immersed in technology, and I understand the benefits and the pitfalls of technology, so I think that's important to understand. And most importantly, I think I'm capable of change. You know, as younger folks are getting more experience and learning more things, their ideas may change from time to time, and I'm capable of change too, as especially right now. I've been thinking a lot, and I've been able to change some of the pains I have, some long-held pains I've had are starting to be changing for me. And I think that's important, either the young people need to look at the field and say, who is capable of change? Because that's what's going to be necessary in the future.
Thank you so much. Ms. Linig?
So, I have a pretty unique situation in my world. I don't know, people know I have three children, but they don't really realize the span of those three children. I have a 30-year-old and a 21-year-old, as well as a 14-year-old at home. And so, I have had the unique opportunity my entire life to really be generally, generationally connected, just by virtue of the fact that I know not only individuals within those different age groups, but then their parents as well. And lastly, I'd like to say that regardless of the age, I think it's about the connections. And so, young, old, in-between, it's really about who's going to represent you the best, and who has the open mind and the ability to really represent the people of the city of Scottsdale. Thank you.
So much. Mr. Little?
Yeah, you know, I, as much as Kevin says he might be the youngest person, and that might be debatable, I think younger than almost anybody I know, and all you have to do is ask my wife, because I'm still a kid at heart. You know, I grew up in the 1960s, and we were idealists, and we believed that we could change the world. And in fact, you know, some areas we did, some areas we didn't. But I think young people would want to vote for me today, because I still believe that. I believe that we can change the world, and we can change the things that we need to change to make life better for all of us, and not just young people. Young people are concerned about the treatment of older people, especially in the housing area. We want people to be able to come here when they're young, afford housing, send their kids to our schools, and they're also concerned about their grandparents so that they don't have to move out of Scottsdale because they can't find affordable housing on fixed incomes. So, we can change the world, and that's why young people should vote for me.
Thanks so much. Ms. Janik and then Mr. Crawford?
Okay. I think you should vote for me, because I may be the oldest person on this panel. I have three children, and I have eight grandchildren. The oldest is 14, the youngest is three months old. I was a teacher. I taught No Child Left Behind, and I think I energized kids to be the best that they could be in science and math. And trust me, that's not easy, but I felt I did a very good job, and I taught a really good school system. The other thing I think we need to realize is, Tom and I worked together for the Preserve, and I have to tell you, it is mostly young people that use that Preserve. It is wonderful to see all the families, all the young adults out hiking all the time. The other thing is, I worked on the Bond Pack, and several other people here today did too, and it was a really good idea, because we're keeping Scottsdale young, innovative, and forward-looking. So, don't let my age scare you. I'm very much involved with young people, and I want them to succeed and thrive, and I want them to be a vibrant part of our community. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Mr. Crawford?
Oh, the pathway. When I was 25-years-old, young man, I was an entrepreneur. I went into business for myself in an industry that didn't even exist. That was the ignition of the fitness boom in Los Angeles. Years later, I was elected into the National Fitness Hall of Fame for my life's work in that industry around the world. I didn't know how to get things done, I know how to go to work, and I know that pathway. I'm a proven community leader. You're going to hear a lot of promises from everybody up here campaigning today. If you want to know what someone is going to do in the future, see what they've done in the past. My initiative, I solved problems in the Bar District, and I created a compatibility with the non-entertainment business community, the residents, and the entertainment community, where now we have compatibility and we have a vibrant downtown. I've worked on lots of projects downtown around the city, and I also supported the Preserve, but I'll tell you what, they only went half-baked. You realize that the city can still sell off portions of that Preserve as needed to raise money. I did a half-baked job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Mr. Auerbach, and then Ms. Caputi.
Thank you. You know, we were all young at one point, and youngsters face a lot of different challenges, whether they're in their mid-to-late teens, or if they're graduating from college this year or a year from now. And I think that, under the circumstances that we all find ourselves in, which is this unprecedented crisis of COVID-19, along with political strife and division, and finding new ways to communicate, I think it's really very important that the youth be comfortable in their position, that they're not afraid to voice a difference of opinion from what the group think seems to be the prevailing thought. And if I am honored enough to earn your vote and be a member of the council, I will make sure that all ages are represented and heard from, and I will be an advocate to ensure that young people do have a voice, and should not be afraid to speak up.
Thank you, Mr. Auerbach. Ms. Caputi?
I'm running for council to be a positive, forward-thinking voice for our city. My campaign is all about the future. What kind of city are we building for our kids? Scottsdale's a large, diverse city. We need to consider the needs of all of our residents, not just a vocal minority. I have three young kids in our public schools. I want them to get a great education, find a good job, a place to live, and maximize their careers right here in Scottsdale. We have to take care of the issues from hire to retire. I use our trails daily. I treasure our Preserve. We need to balance our open spaces with economic drivers that support our quality of life and keep our property taxes low for the next generation. We have to have a dynamic, vibrant downtown that's a year-round destination for both residents and tourists. We have to reinvigorate our economy, create good jobs, and keep people here in Scottsdale to live, work, and play. We've got to be open to business for everyone, young and old. I'm your person.
Thanks so much. Now let's go to Olivia for another question.
Thank you. My question is for Ms. Janik. It's about a current event in Scottsdale. So, we found ourselves in a historic time of an ongoing pandemic and a reckoning of racial injustice throughout the nation. What should the city council do in reaction to Councilman Guy Phillips' comments last week, "I can't breathe" at last week's protest over masks?
Okay, I believe I posted how I felt about that. I thought it was outrageous that he said that, and I thought he stoked the fires of discontent and disillusionment. And I thought he stoked the fires of discontent and disillusionment in our city and in our whole country. And I think we all know, we don't need that right now. We need to settle everything down. We need to think about what we say, especially if you're a representative, you know, on city council. You don't want to do that. It's just a not, it's just a not good look for our city. So what the city council should do, in my mind, I think either Guy needs to resign because he realizes the consequences of his actions. We also have a vote in the mail. It's come out in about 10 days. And in the event that he doesn't resign, the citizens get to say what they want. My problem with us forcing a resignation is that it will lead to lawsuits. And I don't think we need any more lawsuits. I don't think that's what's best for the city. It's expensive, it's time consuming, and it just highlights the divisions of our city rather than bringing us together. That's why a forced resignation at the end of city council, I think, would be very, very problematic. And I've already gotten a bunch of emails on that, legal opinions, that you can't do it. And they gave me the reasons. I don't pretend to know all the answers legally. But I think number one, if he resigns, or number two, if the voters get to speak, we have a clear answer for what should happen. So thank you.
Mr. Auerbach and then Mr. Durham?
Well, I think what Mr. Phillips said was atrocious. I would not make such a statement with regard to whether or not Mr. Phillips should be immediately removed from the council. I don't believe that that should be the case at all. There is an election occurring right now. And the way that our system of government in a democracy, small D, is you have elections for a reason. If you don't like the representative who is your voice at a municipal level of government in this case, then you choose not to vote for that individual. If I am elected, I will protect the First Amendment freedoms of every Scottsdale resident, whether I agree with what they say or not. And if my freedom is threatened today, who's to say that your freedoms won't be threatened tomorrow?
Thank you, Mr. Auerbach. Mr. Durham? You're on mute.
Wanted to make sure my dog didn't start barking. One of the most difficult parts of this job, I think, is choosing our words carefully. Because all of us, even those of us who are still just running for council, have an obligation to represent the people that we're supporting clearly and without prejudice. And that means choosing our words carefully. And Guy Phillips didn't do that. It was, I made it clear what I think of that. It was a horrible mistake. But he can't be forced to resign. Betty's very right about that. There's nothing we can do to force him to resign. I think some of you may have seen a news conference that was held at 10:00 a.m. this morning, where he said he's not going to resign. And so I don't think he will. I understand the city council is going to present a motion of censure tonight. And I think that's the appropriate way forward. And in an election in two or three weeks.
Thank you so much, Mr. Durham. Do Mr. Crawford and then Mr. Maxwell and Ms. Kapooti?
I am quite familiar with the charter, the gouties inside the charter. And there is no mechanism for the city council to remove Mr. Phillips from his position. I also watched that news conference and he asserted in the conference that he's going to be reelected. Mr. Phillips, in my opinion, lacks the integrity to do the right thing and resign. That's unfortunate because not only has he embarrassed the city of Scottsdale, but he's also placed at risk from boycotts and more riots. And that's dangerous. It was a short time ago that we experienced over $38 million worth of damage, theft and vandalism. And this is the wrong thing to say. And I don't think it was ill-thought, I don't think that it was off the top of his head. This was a carefully scripted broadcast reading. And he bathed in the joy of the crowd as they applauded in between those statements. And I won't even repeat the words. And I know this man. I have witnessed his political shenanigans with him and his running mate, Bob Littlefield, for two decades. It's time for them to go now. Thank you.
Mr. Maxwell?
Yeah, thank you so much. Well, I agree with everybody else. I think that what you said was certainly unfortunate. And Bill's also right, Bill and Betty are also right, that there is no mechanism in the city charter to remove him. City leaders have asked him, including the governor and Senator McSally, to remove himself from office. Here's the issue for me, is that regardless of intent, the city has been damaged economically. Tourism has been damaged. There are people out there who will now not come to Scottsdale because of these remarks. And until while he's in office, they'll continue to think that. So we, that's, it's not quantifiable however. Is that going to be $10,000 and $1 million or $2 million? We don't know. But we do know for sure that the city has been damaged economically. And while he's in office, that stain will still be on. So we need to get him out. He needs to be, do the right thing and leave office. All the citizens can remove him from office if they choose to do so. But economically, we need to get back on track and we're not going to do so until he's no longer on the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Ms. Kapooti and then Mr. Little?
I agree with Governor Ducey. The despicable behavior should not be tolerated in public office. There need to be consequences for our actions and Councilman Phillips needs to resign. His actions, as Kevin said, damage our reputation, deter business and tourists from coming to Scottsdale when we need them most. And it also creates a toxic environment for the rest of us who will have to work with him. This idea of leaving the decisions to others is completely unacceptable to me. We'll let the voters decide. We'll kick the can down the road. You know what? That's how we got to this watershed moment in the first place, by people standing by and letting other people make the hard decisions for us. We can't stand by while others do something immoral, illegal or unsafe. It's our duty to stop it. We need leaders who will govern with ethics and facts and have the wisdom and the courage to make these hard decisions when they're needed. We can't leave it to others when it's the most important thing that matters. That's how I roll.
Thank you so much. Mr. Little?
Make no mistake, we gave Guy Phillips the keys to the car. And he drove it 100 miles an hour into a brick wall and he crashed our city. I know there's a lot of great arguments talking about, you know, he should be removed because of the irreparable harm he's done to our economy. True, irreparable, unrecoverable harm he's done to our reputation, true. But I'm trying to think of myself. If I were the parent of a 13-year-old boy or girl, a person of color, what damage did he do to them? We've heard Guy's apologies about how bad he feels. We've heard from his wife about how much harm it's given to their family. But you haven't heard them say, "I'm sorry for the harm I caused your family." So, you know, sometimes we talk about education is a great thing because it helps our economy. No, it helps kids first. What Guy Phillips did hurts people. It hurts people who are already marginalized and are already oppressed. Let's put ourselves in their shoes for a while. Guy Phillips, I said, should resign the day he announced his big event because he violated his oath of office to uphold the law, the executive order given by Mayor Lane, and he encouraged other people to break that as well. It's a disqualifier and I was the first person to say, resign, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you so much. Ms. Lenick, final word?
Thank you. So as our representative, we expect a higher level of individual. And every time you leave your house, including when you're in your house on a Zoom call, you are representing your city as a councilperson. And, you know, there's two thoughts. One is if he truly didn't know what he was saying and was just gasping and said those words, then he's so disconnected that he is not a good representation for our city. And if he did know what he was doing, again, that is absolutely reprehensible. And he does not belong as a representative for our city.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lenick. Let's go back to Dominic for our next question.
Thanks. So Ms. Lenick, I'll have a follow-up question for you. And touching on, you know, John Little mentioned children and kids in our communities. Great cities have great educational systems. And although in Scottsdale, there are separate entities, the city and the school district share a common goal of making our city the best it can be. So two questions. Do you think the city and schools and its boundaries should collaborate and help each other? If so, what should that look like? And secondly, if you were elected to the city council right now, what could be done to help the city? Or what could the city do to help the schools reopen classrooms this fall in wake of the COVID-19 concerns?
So this is near and dear to my heart because as I mentioned, I have three children. One is still in the public school system. And, you know, the two older children that are Sabercat alumni are very successful in, not only in their adult career with the oldest, but a very successful college student. And now the 14-year-old is heading into high school. And so there are a few of us on this panel today that are actually working on the collaboration between Scottsdale School District and the city council. It's something that we are passionate about, something that I'm passionate about. Do I think that it needs to fall under the city umbrella? I don't think that that is necessary. I think that there's a way to collaborate between the school district and the city council and make that work. And I think there's a disconnect not only with the school system, but also city departments, city residents and the city council itself. So I don't think we should stop at the schools with that collaboration and that mentality and spirit of working together. What can be done to reopen? It's funny because when we found out yesterday that schools are now being pushed to August 17th, we have, as parents, done a collective sigh of no. Not only do we as parents want those kids to go back, but the kids want to go back. And I was one of the parents that filled out that SUSD survey. And I was very encouraged by the hybrid school week that they had proposed, which is reducing classes in half by a 3-2 schedule.
Thank you so much.
Three days in, two days online, and then opposite the following week.
Ms. Kapooti?
Yeah, I mean, of course, I understand that the schools in the city are separate entities. But why would we possibly be advocating for more silos? More communication is always better. We should absolutely recreate the committee to join the schools in the city so we can have more communication. Residents and businesses consider our schools when they're thinking about relocating. Schools, of course, raise our property values. The city and our school leaders and Scottsdale Community College should be collaborating. We can be sharing ideas, resources, things like economic development, land use, demographics, facilities. This is the way that we can deliver better services that allow us to keep our high quality of life. Of course, we want students to get a quality education, have a meaningful path to employment and find great jobs here at home. Again, as a parent of three, that's of prime importance to me. The only barrier that's preventing us from thinking up better ways to combine city and school teamwork is our own limited imagination. We've got to get together, especially now. I can't believe my kids aren't going to be going back to school. We've got to get these entities together and figure out a better way to deliver services to our students.
Thanks. Thank you so much, Ms. Kapooti. Mr. Little and then Ms. Durham, or Ms. Janik, excuse me.
Yes, thank you. It was two years ago, actually, this month, that I wrote op-ed to the Arizona Republic saying that the Scottsdale, city of Scottsdale should incorporate an education element into their general plan. Is education not as important as transportation? Is education not as important as housing? Education's our future. And I propose that the city of Scottsdale incorporate a new element in their general plan called education. There's only one other city that I found in the entire country that's done that, and it's Plano, Texas. It articulates our vision, our aspirations of how education in the city and business and recreation and lifelong learning, even for adults post-college, can continue to learn in this community. Learning's our lifeblood and I think it's critically important to address it. As it relates to getting back to school, we've had a long history at the city of working very closely with schools, our police department in terms of providing outreach and security for schools. We can all work together and develop a plan that we'll work on together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Ms. Janik?
Okay, as far as collaboration of the school system and the city, we all recognize they're separate entities, separate budgets, thank goodness. Because when the school is under the control of the city, it's really difficult to manage. I'm from Chicago and I've seen how that works. But what we can do is what John said. I think we need to have an element in the general plan that recognizes the importance of great schools. Because great schools work with great communities. One way we can do that is to set up a mentoring program where we allow high school and college kids to shadow some of the people in government to see what they do, how they do it and what's involved in government. And I think that's real important. The people need to have a hands-on feeling for that. Next, as far as your second part of your question was, can you repeat the second part again? Let me see there.
I'm sorry, you need the second part of the question?
Getting the kids, sorry, getting the kids back in school. Our economy is not going to recover until we get the kids back in school. And I have to tell you, I sympathize with Sammy and Becca. It is not easy. I have three children, they're all married, the wives all work and the kids are all home. And it is really, really tough. And I think the first thing we can do is how about wear a mask? Duh. The government has the right to ask for us to do that. We need to stop the spread now so that the kids can safely go back to school in a couple more weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Janik. Mr. Crawford and then Mr. Maxwell?
Okay, one of the things that adds complexity to this issue and this question is we must realize that the Scottsdale Unified School District straddles three different municipalities. So anything that we do, there's got to be a lot of coordination there. We have to work together with the city of Phoenix, Arcadia, Cave Creek and Scottsdale. Okay? The other thing I'd like to point out is there already are in place working relationships and compatibility with the school district. Number one, how about our school resource office? That's the Scottsdale Police Department. They're in there. They're on clock, helping. Our infrastructure and our public transportation, all three of those things working right now. And there's much more that we can do because that's our future. There will be people up here that will tell you that one has nothing to do with the other. That's incorrect. It has everything to do with the other. As far as opening up in the future, we are learning as we go along. I'm sure that the school district, other entities, parents want to get this done. Another thing that we have to lean on, and that's the Scottsdale Boys and Girls Club. They're there, they're in place and they help these kids when they get out of school so that they're not out wandering streets. That's a very positive program. We need to do everything we can to support them as well.
Thank you so much, Mr. Crawford. Mr. Maxwell and then Mr. Auerbach?
Thank you so much, Prescott. Well, absolutely, I agree that collaboration with the schools and the city needs to happen and more communication. I'm very in favor, the chamber has an initiative called BUS, the Business Unified for Scottsdale Schools, which I think is very helpful in creating a dialogue between the business community and the school system. So I think that's really great and I hope that continues on. Also, I'd like to point out, recently I did a video when the schools first shut down, pointing out what an amazing job SUSD did of pivoting to online learning and getting their staff and their teachers and students up to date and getting them the equipment they needed, the infrastructure they needed to do online learning. They did an amazing job of that. So I'm going to point that out. Also, I got the opportunity to help with the Yes to Children initiative last year, which dealt with the override. As far as getting the kids back to school, just yesterday, the AAP, the American Academy of Pediatrics, issued a statement talking about the social isolation and the social problems that kids may have being out of school for a long time. So I agree with everybody else, we need to get the kids back to school. Not only should they continue their education, continue their learning, but so the social elements and that social integration can happen and so they can get those needs met as well. That's something we need to look at and not take advantage of, not take for granted.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. Mr. Auerbach?
Well, I think Dom phrased in his question a very important fact that the Scottsdale Unified School District is currently fielding candidates. And that is a separate entity with separate jurisdiction. And several of my opponents that are on this call, candidates, I think they're in the wrong race. If their primary concern is education. If their primary concern is education, then perhaps they should be running for the Scottsdale Unified School District Board and not council. The city council's primary job is to protect the public safety of all of the residents who live here and all of the visitors and tourists who come here. That is their number-one job. Now, I've traveled around different counties within the state. There are 254 school districts in the state of Arizona. There is an elected official, the State Superintendent of Public Instruction. The money that the school districts get does not come from the City of Scottsdale's budget or general fund. It's block grant money that comes from the state.
Thank you.
And I think it's also very important that one of my opponents mentioned about an amendment or a part of the general plan. The general plan is outlined by Arizona Revised Statute, and there is no verbiage or language that explains about education being part of a general plan. A general plan is very specific in its elements.
We need to move along, unfortunately. Mr. Durham has not had a chance to speak on this topic yet.
I wrote an article a few weeks ago where I also advocated for a general plan element on education. And after I did that, I learned that John had had the same idea a couple of years ago. I think it's a great idea. Education is one of our biggest and most important industries, and I think the city should be collaborating with the school districts on the use of land, properties, et cetera, et cetera. So we should be collaborating, that's obvious. I'm very passionate about education. I've been on the board of trustees of a college for 10 years. So I've worked with a lot of high school kids as they come into college. And for the last five years, I've been coaching a mock trial team in Scottsdale, and I work with those students every day when it gets into the trial season in February and March. Unfortunately, I have to do it in Phoenix. When I volunteered, there were no openings in Scottsdale, but I learned a tremendous amount about our educational system from that experience.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. I know there are a few more comments on this topic, but I know there's some other topics we'd like to get to. So I think we're actually going to move on to Sarah, back to her, and see if she's got another question for us.
Thank you so much. Okay, so my next question is for Mr. Little. Gandhi once said, "Our ability to reach unity in diversity will be the beauty and the test of our civilization." Please share an example of how you have demonstrated a commitment to diversity in a prior situation.
Well, I don't want to age myself, but I attended civil rights marches in 1968, when we also had a double-headed dragon that we were dealing with, and the war in Vietnam and civil rights. Our communities were being burned down, just like some, it feels like some of them are today. We had the riots in Watts that were essentially about discrimination and a lack of inclusion in our culture. So I've been part of that. I've felt it, I've been in the streets, I carried signs. I marched for our civil rights. The other thing is, is when I came to the City of Scottsdale, I worked very closely with someone who's endorsed me, Don Logan, who was the victim of a terror attack, a bombing attack at City Hall, and I worked with Don. Don worked in human resources with me at the time. And Don has endorsed me. He's the originator of the Center for Celebrating Community Diversity in our community. And so my life has been about creating a sense of inclusiveness, about making sure that all voices are heard in our community. And it's one of the pillars of what I think is important for a healthy community. We say we're very diverse, but you know, outside of having an annual Martin Luther King breakfast, which I've also been a part of for every single year, we need to do more. And it's, nothing has highlighted that more than Mr. Phillips's comments this past week. So let's pay attention to it and do it right.
Thanks so much. Mr. Crawford?
Okay, well, that my life has shown, I have always embraced diversity that I've worked with, the employees that I've had, the outreach I've had in the community. Which, I was just thinking about this, one of the things which that I do not have married my wife and
I think we're having some technical difficulties. So let's move to Mr. Maxwell, and we'll give Mr. Crawford a chance to respond if he connects back on.
Great, thanks, Prescott. So there's two things I've done recently that have helped promote the idea of diversity. Recently, I was with an advocacy group as they were forming and getting their legs underneath them, and they were deciding on what the mission statement of the group was. In that room, there was two individuals who were really, wanted to use the word inclusive and make sure the word inclusive was included. And they were, they were a little bit passive in their voices, and so I recognized that they were being overshadowed by some stronger personalities in the room. So I came to them and helped champion their idea. I said, "I'm with you, I think we need to use the word inclusive." And so the mission statement for that group now does include the word inclusive, which I think is very important to do. Another thing I've done recently is that my employer is very active in something called ERGs, Employee Resource Groups. These are small subsets of employees that recognize racial diversity and try to help them have like-minded meetings. So we have an African-American ERG group, we have a Pride ERG group, we have a Women in Technology ERG group. So I'm very active in those groups and making sure that those kids, those meetings get scheduled and are attended on a regular basis. So two things I've done to help with diversity issues recently.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell. We'll go back to Mr. Crawford. We lost you for part of that, so we'll give you a little more time to finish your thoughts.
Where did you leave me? Where did I leave you?
In the beginning.
Right in the beginning.
It was a little tough, a little choppy, so why don't we, where'd you start over?
So I was talking about the fact that in my professional career, I've always embraced diversity, not only with the clients that I've worked with, but also my employees. There's never been an issue as to who got hired because of race, color, religion, anything like that. I'll tell you a little story, though, that will probably confirm my openness to diversity. When my wife and I were married at the Hermosa Inn many years ago, Vernon Parker, the former mayor of Paradise Valley, married us. So I think that speaks volumes for our view on diversity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Ms. Janik?
I think Tammy was ahead of me, but either way.
It's okay.
Okay.
I'm doing my best.
No, I get it, I just didn't want to cut in and get upset. Okay. What I have done to encourage diversity is I believe education is the key for everybody, no matter what they do. So I volunteered at the Arizona Science Center, which is a very, very diverse group of people coming in to learn about science. And I developed curriculum in the biological sciences with a bent towards a healthy lifestyle. And I also presented these classes. And I think that by just pushing knowledge and education and how to stay safe and how to stay healthy, that diversity is recognized and it's able to thrive. So I would say that is one of my major contributions to diversity, in addition to teaching With No Child Left Behind and teaching those children that go all the way to the Intel Science Center, science competition. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Caputi?
So I walk the talk. I'm certified by the City of Phoenix Equal Opportunity Department as a woman-owned business. I've been breaking barriers all my life, leading by example as a role model for my daughters and other women. I strongly believe that you have to see it to be it, and I am that person. I also served as the only woman on the Development Review Board for the last three years, and I believe I lent a different voice and perspective that made that board much richer. I've been outspoken about support for non-discrimination ordinance in our city for many years. I feel strongly about it, that we should be open to everyone. I also spent the last couple of years of my life working on an ERA task force, trying to convince our legislature to pass an amendment to the U.S. Constitution prohibiting discrimination on the basis of sex. Much more work to be done on that. As a councilperson, I would like to have more than one person in the City of Scottsdale Office of Diversity and Inclusion. And I would also like to give more support to our Human Relations Commission that's been trying to do great work but could use a little backup. We have to put our money where our mouth is.
Thank you, Ms. Caputi. Mr. Durham and then Mr. Auerbach, please.
I agree with Betty that education is a key to solving this problem. So for that reason, I have done a number of things centering around education. When I was in Chicago, I was involved with a group called Lincoln Limited. And in that group, each person of, each person in that group vows to basically adopt a young man or a woman. I had a young African-American boy, and I supported him through tuition payments, through four years of high school and mentoring and taking the plays. We went to see Romeo and Juliet. And I gave him a lot of opportunities like that that he wouldn't have otherwise. And he successfully went on to St. Louis University, graduated, and I actually exchanged emails with his mother this morning, and he's doing very well. One of the other things I'm most proud of is that the college where I'm a trustee is the number-one college in the country for social mobility. And that means making sure that persons of color and persons from economically disadvantaged programs get through four years of college and successfully graduate.
Thank you.
According to U.S. News and World Report, we're the number-one place in the country for that.
Thank you so much. Mr. Auerbach and then Ms. Linig.
Every person has dignity and value. And Scottsdale is a city that welcomes people from a diverse background. We always have, and we always will. For me, an example that comes to mind is when I was in high school, I was in a club called the Junior Civitan, and we would go out every weekend and volunteer to help Little League teams that didn't have coaches to step in and substitute coach and play pepper with the boys that wanted to learn how to play baseball. We would go and we would serve food at missions, or at churches, or at food banks in low-income housing projects. And one of the other things that stood out is we took a retreat where we had a contest, and two children that participated in this contest got to go with all of us on a retreat outing where we had some fun staying at a cabin.
Thank you so much, Mr. Auerbach. Ms. Linig?
So a few examples I have is, in 2018, I was the president of the Scottsdale Area Association of Realtors. And at that time, we had a 13-person board, and I created inclusionary activities to make sure that everyone had a voice and that they were able to be heard. We also, as Realtors, live by a code of ethics, and that code of ethics does talk about treating everyone equally. And most recently, the Bond Committee in November, I was a member of, and I think that's a very good example of a diverse group of our city stakeholders. And most importantly, it's leading by example.
Thank you so much. Let's go back to Olivia for one more panelist question.
All right, so my question will be for Mr. Maxwell, it's about public safety. What do you see as a long-term plan for managing COVID-19? And how would you make changes to Scottsdale's response as this crisis develops?
Wow, great question, Olivia, thank you so much. So here's how I feel about COVID-19 and our response to it. I think we need to get very, we need a lot of cooperation from our citizens. We've tried a couple of things now that have not worked, and we're finding ourselves in a situation where we're in a worse situation than we were three months ago. Meanwhile, our businesses are closed, Mr. Crawford just had his business closed today, which is horrible. We've got to get this thing over once and for all. I am asking everyone to help support safety measures, social distance, wear your mask, do what's necessary, so we can get this behind us once and for all. This is, I think we should have a really aggressive safety measures in place for the next 30 days so that we can get through this once and for all, get our businesses open, get people back to work and get back to normal. So whatever it's going to take, whatever our medical professionals tell us we need to do, I think we need to do, and encourage everyone else to do, so we can get our businesses back open. That's what I think we need to do.
Thank you so much. Ms. Janik?
I totally agree with Kevin. We need to get moving on this. We need to get moving right away. We need to wear masks, we need to social distance, we need to wash our hands. We all know that. But somehow, I also think we need to have consequences for these actions. Any business that doesn't follow the rules, they get one warning, they get a nice fine, they get shut down. End of discussion. COVID is just ravaging our economy. We need to get it under control, the sooner the better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Linig?
So I definitely think that wearing masks is not only a necessity, but it's about respect, respecting other people. Nobody likes wearing the mask, and we're not asking you to like it, but it is important that you respect your fellow, you know, neighbor, person, whoever it might be, and wear that mask. It makes people feel good, and that should be enough, right? Also, testing, 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 testing. You know, contact trace testing to find out where the hotspots are and to target those areas before they erupt. And so I think it's really important that we start to hone in on those areas that are seen as hotspots and make sure that those people are aware of that ahead of time, and we take the measures necessary to keep that quarantine.
Thank you so much, Ms. Linig. Mr. Crawford?
Well, hindsight's 2020, and you're right, we've all been impacted by this. My wife Debbie and I, this is our second round, is being shut down. You're not going to see me leading bait issues prior to anything becoming law, like I did with, you know, the pros and cons of masks. I happen to believe that working out and strength training is the best thing that you can do for your immune system, but we're not following that protocol at the moment. We should have shut everything down hard for two weeks when we had a chance. If we had done that collectively as a city, as a state, we probably wouldn't be where we are now. But we didn't know what we knew back then. So I will continue to work through this, learn as we go, encourage people to obey the law, and do everything that we can to protect our most vulnerable so that we can try to get rid of this. It looks like we're good with it for a while. It's going to change our behavior, it's going to change our lives.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Mr. Auerbach?
Yeah, the problem here, obviously, is a virus that was brought here by a foreign government intentionally or otherwise. And the opportunity is for reasonable people to make judgments based on the information that they have about a choice that they want to make, and where they want to go or not go, or what they want to do or not do. And I think it's a very slippery slope when the quote-unquote herd mentality is to shame people into taking a step or an action that that individual does not feel comfortable with doing.
Thank you, Mr. Auerbach. I believe I saw Ms. Caputi's hand.
There's really no point in going back and saying what we should have, could have, would have done. We're here, and it's a constantly changing situation, so we need to just analyze the data as we go and move accordingly. I think that, of course, we all need to do our part to keep everybody healthy, that's a no-brainer. Wear your mask, you know, let's get back to school, let's get back to work. This is really annoying for those of us that are parents and trying to make a living here. And then more importantly, let's use this as an opportunity to pivot in a different direction. We have been saying for so long that we need to diversify our economy. Well, here is the perfect moment. This is the absolute perfect example to show us that we cannot be so dependent on our tourist industry. We need to develop the areas where we can have, my husband and I have been working from home. need to develop the areas where we can have, my husband and I have been working from home very easily, actually, the last couple of months. We need more jobs like this. Knowledge workers, high-tech, higher education, biotech, financial services, insurance industry, the areas where people can adjust and move forward and not be so dependent. Let's, let's take this as a lesson and use it and grow and learn and make our city stronger for it. And wear your mask.
Thank you, Ms. Capooty. Mr. Durham? You're on mute, sir.
Some people have said that the mask requirement is unconstitutional. But John Adams, one of the writers of the Constitution, once said, "The Constitution is not a suicide pact." There's nothing in the Constitution that requires us to expose each other to the COVID. And I agree with Betty that all the requirements we've been talking about, they need to be enforced by the law, if necessary. And it's just common sense. And, you know, this is hopefully going to be a relatively short period of a month, and we can beat this thing. So, in the meanwhile, the only way we're going to beat it is if we comply. And if people don't comply, then the law ought to come down on them.
Thank you so much. And then, Mr. Little?
Contact tracing, testing, wear a mask, social distancing, and for employers, when they become aware that someone in their employee has the virus, they have a responsibility to tell all the other employees to take extra precautions or close their businesses. So, this is, this is something that we've somehow or another, when we hear comments like, "Oh, it came from China," and blah, blah, blah. This is a healthcare crisis, folks. This isn't a political crisis. This is about our health. And so, this is a tremendous opportunity for us to focus and get away from the political toxins associated with this and start talking about how to rebuild our economy, how to diversify our economy, how to become a healthy city and what that means. This is an opportunity here. Let's take it. Let's not become embroiled in the divisiveness of making this a political issue. It's about our health.
Thank you, Mr. Little. So, I think that that wraps it up for our panelist questions. I have one more question for each of the, to candidates to close us out. And that is, what is your vision that would inspire our children for the future of our city? What is your vision that would inspire our children for the future of our city? Let's start with Mr. Auerbach.
Well, it's been often said, and it's trite, but the children are our future. And they will be the ones leading this country when we're older and when we're gone. And they'll be the ones making the decisions about the future of not only the city of Scottsdale, but all of what this great country has to offer and represents. And I think it's important that we, as candidates running for elected office, to represent them, that we have open lines of communication, and that we are straightforward and open in listening to all sides of an argument, and that being persuaded one way or the other based on the evidence is how I would vote if I'm elected to be on the city council. I ask for your vote. Mike Auerbach, Mike for Scottsdale.
Thank you, Mr. Auerbach. I'm Mr. Durham.
Well, people come to Scottsdale because of its extraordinary and unique character. And we need to preserve that for our children. And by that character, I mean the things which brought me to Scottsdale, which were open skies, open lines, open land, sorry, fabulous design characteristics of our city, the architecture. And all of those things need to be kept. And they can be kept with high-tech jobs, lower-scale development that supports high-tech jobs, biological sciences, the Cure Corridor, and preserves our economic growth in ways that don't disrupt our infrastructure, our traffic, and that don't impose unwanted density and height. We can do all of those things and preserve the unique character we have. One thing I've specifically mentioned before, I'll do it again, is that we need to be a better city for biking. We have one of the best environments in the United States for biking. I continue to support our tourism because it brings unique elements, such as Barrett-Jackson, the Phoenix Open, Cali-Essen, and it brings so much to our community.
Thank you so much. Ms. Lenick?
So, I think what you're doing here today is extremely important. Groups of young professionals, such as yourself, getting involved in the city and the future of the city is extremely important. My daughter was on the Mayor's Youth Council, and I would like that to be a more robust program. I would like that to be a little bit less show and more input. And for, those are high school students that get involved in that. And I'd like to expand that program to be able to involve groups like the ones that are sponsoring this event here today. And we, as city council, really need to listen and ask the important questions about what all groups are looking toward the future and be able to implement those ideas and continue to, continue to ask those questions along the way.
Thank you so much. I'm Mr. Little.
Yes, you know, I mentioned earlier, sometimes I think I'm still 18 years old. And so, I'm going to answer the question as if I was 18 years old. Here's what I want. I want a healthy, safe, and secure community to live in. I want a place that when I'm a few years older and I graduate from college, that I can afford to live in this community, perhaps with my parents and maybe even my grandparents who live in a different part of the city. I want a community that's sustainable from an environmental standpoint. I want to see more of an investment in solar energy and renewable resources. I want to live in a city where the education system is going to serve me. I want to work in a, in a, in a city, and I want to live in a city in a place where education is not going to put me into bankruptcy to try to get through. I also want to live in a city where equal rights are given to everybody. That includes LGBTQ community. That means people who are of color. That means women. That means people who are older. This is the place I want to live. And if I'm 18 years old, and you can create that for me, then I'm going to be here for life, and I'm going to love this city that I live in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Ms. Janik?
Very good question. Two things. First of all, a very important aspect that John mentioned is that we need to be thinking more about green energy and saving our environment for future generations. But I think what inspires citizens the most is when people like Tom and I, ordinary citizens, say to the majority on city council, "We don't want that development in our preserve. We worked for two and a half, three years, and guess what? We won. My kids were inspired by what I did. We had 70% of the vote. I know that most of the people knew what we were doing, and they were really happy that we accomplished it." And that is the biggest distinction between Tom and I and the rest of the community, or the rest of the people we're talking about. We know that we need a citizen majority. We know that we want everybody to have a seat at the table, that we're going to listen to everybody. And it's not okay that that majority, for four years, has approved every project that came before them. Not all of them were good. We didn't want all of them. You need to get citizen representation, citizen majority, and that is what Tom and I bring to the table. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Janik. I'm Mr. Crawford.
We have four children, four grandchildren. So, when I do things that benefit the city, I always have that in mind. Am I doing something that will benefit their quality of life in their future years? Will they be proud of me for the decisions that I have made? Have I made a contribution that will give them jobs, security, housing? As a community leader, have I done the right things to make Scottsdale a better place? As a small business owner, have I created economic vitality and security for their financial well-being? And as a public safety advocate, I'm the only one up here that's got real experience in law enforcement. Ten years as a commander on Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. And I think we can do better in our public safety. I'm the only one that said that our chief of police didn't a good job protecting us the nights of the riot, when he said he did a great job. I didn't get a police endorsement, because I offer constructive criticism. We could have done better. And if we don't shape up our public safety, we're going to have real problems. And that is the number one responsibility of any municipality. I'm the only one that has a perspective that can get that done properly. Oh, please, go to my website, billcrawfordforschottsdale.com. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Ms. Capooty?
I've said it over and over and over again. I'm running for city council because I want this city to be better for my kids than it's been for me. I believe deeply that our city is at a crossroads right now. We have to ask the question, what do we want our city to look like going forward? Do we want to be a bedroom community that ends up looking like Palm Springs? Or do we want to be a city that's thriving, economically vibrant and diverse, and that works for all of our citizens? We can't bubble wrap the city, and standing still is moving backwards and losing ground. We have to move forwards. We have to look for the future. We have to make the city better for our children. We need a thriving downtown. We need to make sure that we make the economic engines of our city run, so that we can enjoy our beautiful preserve that we all loved and did not want to have commercial development in. Everyone loves the preserve. No one uses it as much as I do. My whole family is biking and running and enjoying it daily. We love it. But you know what? We need to pay for it. And the way we pay for our open spaces and our beautiful amenities here in Scottsdale is that we make sure the rest of the city is economically vibrant and diverse and generates the revenue that we need to keep our beautiful formula. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Capooty. Finally, Kevin Maxwell.
Thank you so much. First of all, before we start, I want to thank Scottsdale Rising Professionals. I want to thank Fuel Scottsdale. I want to thank Scottsdale Community College. And I want to thank Scottsdale Leadership. I've been involved with all those organizations, and you guys put on a really good form today, so I appreciate that. Also, thank you to Prescott, Olivia, Sarah, and Dominic. You guys had some really good questions. My vision to inspire the children of Scottsdale is this. I want to serve Scottsdale in a manner that's inclusive for all. If we can do that, our children will grow up to be not only toddler adults, but they'll, they'll be capable of accepting one another as well. I think it's all about opportunity. When you hear about the struggles that other communities are having with either race, or any, you know, civil rights issues, or joblessness, or anything like that, it's always about opportunity. So, what I want to provide Scottsdale and our youth coming up is opportunities. I want to provide job opportunities. I want to provide educational opportunities. And I will also provide, provide opportunities to live in harmony with one another. So, that's the thing I think that Scottsdale needs to do for our youth, is number one, is provide opportunities. Thank you so much, the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Maxwell. Well, in closing, we'd like to thank the eight candidates for joining us in this conversation, and we wish you good luck in your campaign. This forum has been recorded and will be available starting tomorrow, July 1st, via YouTube, from the host organizations, the Scottsdale Area Chamber of Commerce, Scottsdale Leadership, Scottsdale Community College, and SCOT. We will be providing links to all constituent groups and the public as well, as to both the Scottsdale Independent and Scottsdale Progress for Promotion. So, thank you, everyone, and this concludes our program for today.
Thank you. Very nice job. Thank you. Prescott, good job. Olivia?